Currently the Vice Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission and I'm filling in for the Chair this evening. I'd like to introduce our other Commissioners up here in the hearing, starting on my left.
John Borowski.
Brian Nicolalo.
Jeff Mills.
Stephen Baker.
Tonight we will be holding a public hearing on a request to amend the Metro Plan, land use designation, and change the zoning for the 78-acre Rest Haven Memorial Park property at 3900 Willamette Street. These are city files MA 15-1 and Z 15-1. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form. I heard us going over those, those are green, and they're in the back of the room. Do any Commissioners at this time have any disclosure of conflicts of interest or ex parte Hearing none, I then would ask staff to introduce the topic, please.
Thank you. My name's Heather O'Donnell, I'm with the City of Eugene Planning Division, and I'm just going to give a brief presentation about the site context.
I don't think your mic's on, Heather.
Can't hear you. Pardon.
Is that better?
No.
Uh oh.
Right, turning it on.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Better?
Not really.
How about this one over here? It looks like a fan job.
All right, we got the AV specialist in the house.
Thank you.
One for the podium, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know where you came from, but thank you.
They're watching.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Heather O'Donnell, I'm with the City of Eugene Planning Division, and I'm just going to go give a brief presentation, go over some site context, and what the proposal is in front of you today, and then talk a little bit about the public comments that we've received, and enter into the record the additional public testimony that you've received since you received your packet. So, let's see if I can point here. This is just kind of panning out here, this is the site we're looking at, this is the Rest Haven Memorial Park Cemetery. This is Willamette Street here, this is 39th, and Brayburn is right here. And I'm just going to... This is really dark, I apologize, but to zoom in here a little bit, what you're seeing here is the site. Again, this is Willamette, this is Brayburn, and this is 39th, and so up is north. You can see the part of the property that is more landscaped-looking is generally where the cemetery use is on the property, and the area that is less landscaped-looking, more trees, that is generally the undeveloped portion of the property. These pictures, which you can't see very well, Densmore is right here, and so this view southeast is looking in this direction, the view south is kind of looking in this direction, and these are some views from some other parts of the property. This is a map that was provided by the applicant, just a clarification on the acres of the site. It is 74 acres, I think that was a typo, Commissioner Jaworski, that I had in your comments, sorry about that. It's 74 acres, there is about 28 acres in cemetery use, and about 46 acres that are undeveloped. And what you're seeing in kind of the shading here is, if you were to zoom in, you would see that this is burial plots, and so some of these are existing and some of them are future, but it kind of shows you the extent of the existing and planned cemetery use. So what's under consideration tonight is that the city's Metro Plan, which is the city's long-range plan for property within the city, has a land use designation map that identifies the property as for future use for parks and open space, that's why it's in green. You can see around the site is low-density residential in yellow, which is not really coming up yellow there, but that's what that's showing. And the proposal is to change the Metro Plan designation of the property to be low-density residential, just like the surrounding neighborhood. The other part of the proposal is to change the zoning of the property. So what you're seeing here in kind of a faded yellow is the R1 low-density residential zone of the property, and then in the blue is the public land zone of the property. So it's actually split-zoned, basically right along where 40th kind of deadens into the property. It also has a water resources protection overlay zone on the property, and that is not proposed to change. So really what's under consideration is rezoning this portion of the property to match the rest of it, low-density residential. I have some additional context for you, given the public comment that we've received on the site in the past and currently. You will read in your comments, there's discussion about natural resources on the site, so there are goal five protected streams on the site, that's what you're seeing in the purple and the green. This gives you 20-foot contours, kind of showing you what the slope is of the site, it kind of generally slopes down towards 39th and Willamette, and you see kind of a knoll up here in the southern portion of the site, and you can see the slopes a little bit better here. So as far as the public testimony, you've received all the public testimony that we've received on this land use application. You've either received it in your packet, which you got last week, there are also two additional emails that you have in front of you that were received after the packet went out, so I'm entering those into the record now. And what you may be aware is that this property, and you may have heard some of the discussion before the meeting, this property, there's actually been several land use applications on the property. The most recent one was last year, the city was actually proposing to re-designate and rezone the property, exactly the same as what the property owner now is proposing. There's also a conditional use approval on the property from '95 that basically shows a master plan for the whole site to be in cemetery use, that's currently still in effect. And I guess what I want to say about that, because there has been still a lot of questions about those land use applications, is that changing the zoning and the designation of the property do not affect any applications that have either been approved or are submitted and sitting, pending in our office, that it doesn't affect that. This is really about kind of a higher-level question of whether or not, you know, it makes sense for low-density residential uses on the site in the future, so it's kind of separate from those previous applications, it's a new application. So generally, a lot of the comments that we've received have been concerns about what types of uses could be allowed on the site, and then when those uses start to happen, concern about how the site would develop, given the slopes and some of the previous requirements for tree preservation and buffer requirements that are on the previous land use applications. And that's what can be really challenging for these types of applications, because this is a zone change and a land use designation change, so we're not reviewing any specific development at this time. And so, and that's always what is kind of of most interest, I think, to people, is exactly how it's going to develop. And oftentimes, we don't actually have a specific site plan that we're reviewing when you're just changing your zoning, and you're not, you're actually not required to have one either. But I do want to acknowledge that, you know, these are the majority of the comments that we've received even previously about this property, is, you know, what type of uses could be allowed, and what is the development going to look like, and are there areas that could be off-limits from development? The type of uses that could be allowed, again, because we're not reviewing a specific application at this time, it's really any type of use that would be allowed in R1 zoning. So if you were to look back at that map, you would see that most of the area is zoned R1, and what you see in the neighborhood is, the property to the south is a church, you see mostly single-family residential that has been approved through subdivisions, you probably see some apartments, and so again, I just want to be clear that, you know, we're not locking in a use at this time, even if the applicant had told us specifically what they wanted to do, it's definitely something that could change in the future, because we're doing kind of a higher-level review right now. We've also heard concerns about increased traffic. This similarly is related to kind of future development issues, what's the traffic going to be like from the site. As part of this application, the applicant is required to submit a traffic analysis that again is at a high level, and so essentially what that analysis is doing is asking the first question, which is, under the proposed designation and zoning, would the future vehicle trips from the site be more than they are under the current designation and zoning? And the applicant's traffic analysis said that yes, it would. And so then the next question is, okay, if the area develops with, as, under the proposed plan designation and zoning, and if the rest of the area develops, can the streets handle that traffic? And that's kind of the level of analysis that you're doing at this stage. And the applicant's traffic analysis showed that the roads are constructed to handle additional traffic that would be a result of build-out of this area. And then finally, we have definitely heard a lot of comments about concern of loss of open space for the area, and one of the things that is challenging with this is that I think there are a lot of kind of semi-public-feeling uses in the city, like cemeteries, golf courses, that are under private ownership, but we had designated or zoned the property as parks and open space and public land at some point in history. And so now what we're dealing with is a property owner who is, doesn't need their whole land anymore for open-space-type uses. And so what this would do would kind of help clean up a conflict, kind of a disconnect that's happening with the fact that it's actually private property that has been designated parks and open space and public land, when really it's not under public ownership. The other thing we want to make sure we look at is, because it is designated parks and open space, what does the remaining public land in the area look like if this is not designated parks and open space? And so this map shows, in green are park land that are publicly owned, and just to give you a sense of, you know, what the distance is, you know, it's not a buffer off of everybody's property, but a buffer at least off of this property shows that within a quarter-mile, as kind of the crow flies, you've got, oops, I've lost my, there we go, you've got this park here and Blanton Ridge here, definitely different types of open space than what you're talking about with this property. Blanton Ridge is more of a natural park system, but it kind of shows you that there is opens, publicly-owned, open space in the area. And so with that, I would turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you. Testimony presented must be directed toward the approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes applies to the decision that we're trying to reach tonight. That failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of evidence or sufficient to afford the Planning Commission and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to those issues and action for damages in circuit court, it would preclude that. Speakers would be called in the following order: those in support of the proposal, beginning with the applicant, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the proposal. Please give your name and address when you come to the podium to speak. I'll now open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Bill Close for the applicant. 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 204 in Eugene.
Can you speak louder?
I'm moving closer. Thank you for taking this little chunk out of your summer to consider this. I have a, I hope that I'm the only person that speaks on behalf of the applicant tonight, but I have a big chunk of our professional team here as backup. I want to say just a very few words in my opening remarks, and I want to start with saying that the staff report has three qualities that I really like to see in a staff report: succinct, exciting, and supportive. So really, the staff report says what we would say to you if we were slogging through all of the standards. Really, I don't want to dwell on any more of those issues. A big picture here, I want to emphasize what the staff noted in their opening remarks, that this is not a development proposal. All we're doing here is changing what basket this property is in, and the, in terms of the big picture of what you folks have been looking at in recent months, this proposal fits with where the city's going right now. Big picture, the city is looking for places to find land for residential development inside the existing urban growth boundary, and this is an example of that kind of land. We're really talking about adding roughly 40, 45 acres, or something like that, to land that would be developable for housing. And when you're all done with you and Vision Eugene Project, you're hopefully going to find that, for right now, you've got enough land, and this will help meet that need. Dropping back a few years, what we're asking you to do here is exactly what you did for the West Lawn Memorial Park five or six years ago, and I forget how many of you here for that exciting episode, but it was really the same kind of thing. If you go out West 11th to the end of civilization there, you see West Lawn Memorial Park on your left, that site really is almost 80 acres in size. It starts at West 11th and it goes through the green lawn and right up the hill into the trees. And the folks that acquired that, the Musgroves at the time, said, for heaven's sake, you know, we'll be, we'll be five millennia before we use all this property for cemetery. So what they said to the city was, let's take that southernmost 40 acres and replan it to low-density residential. Like this property already had R1 zoning, but that doesn't get you very far if you have parks and open space plan designation. So what you recommended there, and what the city council followed through and did, was re-designate the plan to low-density residential. And that land, like this land, is going to be available to help meet that grow-up-not-out need. So that's really the big picture. If you have any questions about this for me right now, I'd be happy to answer. I'd look forward to addressing any points that might need addressing in rebuttal. Thank you.
Well, we'll do questions after. What's the procedure here?
You can do it either way, you can ask questions right now if you'd like, or you can wait, either way.
I'll wait, and then maybe you can talk to it later.
Thank you.
And right here, the rest of the public.
We have one neutral speaker, Mr. Robert Milks. Hope I got that last name right.
My name is Robert Milks. I live at 388 Delwood Drive, Eugene, 97405, and I'd like to make some opening remarks. I did submit a written statement, and I will, I've got a couple of additional things to go with that written statement, but in terms of opening remarks, what I, what I really, I've heard from people in the area. I don't, I'm not really adjacent, but I am within the, as the crow flies, the radius of the Rest Haven issue area, and the message is, is that the subject property, Rest Haven Memorial Park, as the name clearly states, it is Rest Haven Memorial Park. It's not Rest Haven Memorial Cemetery, graveyard, burial site, it is park. And the Metro Plan clearly indicates that Rest Haven Memorial Park is a designated parks and open space and public land use. And when the Metro Plan was created and established, the clear intent was for Rest Haven Memorial Park to be a park and have open space, and serve as a cemetery as well, which the owner is, you know, runs that cemetery. So really, the big picture here that I want to say in the opening remarks is, is that this area has been enjoyed for decades by the neighboring area. It's been an area for kids playing in that area. I've walked that whole area, and they have forts back in the back that, I know, some of them are rather deteriorated, but for families and kids and pets, it's been, it's been an open area that's really accessible, and not like, you know, something more like a, you know, a Tugman Park, or, you know, like a Wayne Morris Farm, okay? It's a different kind of place. And it's, and the big picture really comes down to this. Rezoning, and I've got some questions about rezoning, the big picture is, is that if that gets rezoned and developed, it's going to be taking a large park out of Eugene, because it has really been used as a park. And now to, to the points that, additional points about the written statement. In the notice of a, of a public hearing and mailed to the homeowners adjacent or in the vicinity of Rest Haven is incorrect for a number of reasons. Now, in my written statement, I pointed out that the internet website address for viewing materials relevant to this hearing, which by the way is important, because if you don't have, if you can't have access to that, you know, homeowners that, you know, appear before you, you know, need to be prepared for a hearing, and that makes it difficult. And after submitting that to Planning, I received a thank you for letting us know about the website links as well, and I see we were not able to make the correction, so this confirms the incorrectness of that particular web address. The second thing, under applicable, or applicable, I'm sorry, applicable criteria, it states that the Planning Commission will address relevant approval criteria from EC 9.7735 and EC 9.8865. However, it's my understanding it's not 9.7735, it's actually 9.7730. At least that's, that's what the applicant has been, and all of the application documents were regarding. So that seems to be another incorrect situation there with the, with the situation, as far as the notice goes. The other thing is, is that the stated request fails to indicate on the 45 acres, this is really confusing. The 45 acres of Rest Haven Memorial Park, which is referred to as the south part of the property, is defined in the conditional use agreement, CU 95-2, as an unplanned area and designated Zone 6. The property owner and property owner representative portrayed this area in their application and at the neighborhood applicant meeting, or meetings, as already being designated R1. If the 45 acres is already designated R1, then the Metro Plan has already been changed without going through, as far as I know, a public process. And said property should have been approximately 44 acres, and I guess that's been slid down, so that also seems to be incorrect. So in summary about the, the notice of a public hearing, I believe this public hearing is somewhat flawed from the standpoint of people that have looked at this notice, and there is a linkage issue that I put in the written statement as well. It would be nice for homeowners and people interested in this to know, there's a linkage between what, the development, if there was going to be a development, and what, the reasons. I mean, what is the reason for doing this? Is it to take away a park, or is it, is it, you know, for a development? I've got some comments further go. So this may be an issue to be taken up with Luba, I believe that that is a possibility. As far as understanding and being involved, according to EC 9.7730, Goal 1 is that all citizens, or citizen involvement, to develop a citizen involvement program that ensures, I want to emphasize the word "ensures," the opportunity for citizens to be involved in, also emphasize all phases of the planning process, this is part of the planning process, but people need information and needs to be transparent. Okay, so, in, in, in terms of this transparency, it would have been nice if in the notice of public hearing, that the reason, the reason for what the applicant is asking for would have been included. There was, there was room for that, I don't think that's, that's a big deal, but if, I think there would be a lot more people here tonight, and I think a lot more interest in presenting, you know, and showing you how many people have been contacting me about this issue. I attended on January 14th the, the first neighborhood applicant meeting at Rest Haven Memorial Park Chapel, and the stated reason for the meeting was to inform attendees about the request for the Metro Plan amendment, change in land use designation, and when questioned about the reason or reasons for the request, the presenters at the meeting evaded the issue and refocused to say it's only about the Metro Plan and that there was no plans for development, okay? That was on the 14th. On the 16th, when the application was submitted to the city, it was clearly stated, absolutely clear, that's in my written statement, clearly stated that the reason for this, this request was for the development. Let's see. Finally, you know, I know that, you know, the interested parties, the applicants, the city developers, you know, they're involved in land use, land use issues constantly, and affected homeowners in and around the area, we're at a disadvantage, time to prepare, knowledge of the issues. And, and I think, you know, that there should be some more transparency here for that Goal 1 to be met, in terms of the, of the criteria for the state. So in, in, in finality, you know, I believe that homeowners adjacent to Rest Haven would like to know all the intentions of the applicant with respect to residential development before a Metro Plan amendment is granted by the city, and that would include the nature or whatever, because there is a linkage here. You know, people, besides taking away a park, it's like, the comment I received just today is, I don't know if I want to buy this home that is, this person is like pursuing on Brayburn, and want five years of construction. And he did not receive, obviously, a notice of the, of the public hearing to be here. That's my, that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions, appropriate topic.
Thank you, Mr. Milks. Next speaker in opposition, first speaker in opposition is- Next speaker in -- first speaker in opposition is Robin Ingram, followed by David Berg.
See if I can do this. So I'm here to ask that --
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. You already gave it. Robin Ingram, 4370 Willamette Street, 97405.
I get it wrong a lot, though, so.
You what?
I get it wrong a lot. You got it wrong, so thank you.
So I'm here to ask that both, I think there are really two requests on the table, one land use designation, one rezoning. I'm here to ask that neither be changed from what they are or approved as per the applicant. So to start out with Dr. Spock, you know, there are times wherein the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, and we are certainly in one of those times. This current heat wave we've had, this current drought we are all experiencing, whether we think it came from this or that, we are experiencing climate change. And it's a little bit like the white elephant in the room. We have been, we have this cultural capsule, and that's where we look for all the rules and regulations that over decades, hundreds of years, we've made stronger and stronger and stronger. And it's gotten rather thick, and we lose track of what's outside. And this hearing and this request, all these things have arisen out of this culturally-defined what we should be doing. And yet, in those codes, in the regulations, in those laws, climate change was never considered a critical factor, but it is. It may be the most critical factor. I mean, you may disagree in all kinds of other things, but it's creeping up on us, and it's coming fast. And the thing that breaks my heart is that one of the greatest allies we have for climate change, whatever, slowing down, if not reversing, is trees, is forest land. They, you know, they breathe forests, they give us oxygen, they take in CO2, they hold the retention water in the soil, they can make their rivers, you know, and, big enough, they create weather change, climate change. So my request to you would be to deny these applicants not, I'm not going to the specifics of the culturally-created rules and regs, because I think the elephant in the room is what needs to be addressed. And what it encumbers you with is a consideration of taking responsibility to perhaps turn or at least abate the climate change situation, which is, we've all been experiencing. And, you know, we're going to the edge. You could turn us around. So I just ask you not to approve this on that basis. I know it's outside the rules. That's the very point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. David Berg, followed by Bill Richards.
Thank you, Commissioners. Actually, I should have checked the neutral box.
Name and address, too, please.
I'm not speaking in opposition. My name is David Berg at 4125 Brayburn Drive. I also represent my wife, Judy, and our home does back up to the western slope of Resthaven Cemetery. We are not opposed to the Metro Plan amendments as proposed by the applicant. However, we do want to keep in front of the Commissioners' eyes and ears the issue with regard to the western and southern slopes of the cemetery property, so that if and when it does come before the Commission to granularize the plans for that property, that the environmental effects of the western and southern slopes of the cemetery be taken into consideration, specifically the stormwater runoff, erosion, and wind throw environmental effects on the properties that are adjacent to the cemetery. But other than that, we have no opposition to the Metro Plan amendment as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Bill Richards, followed by Kate Dubach.
I'll try to speak, so maybe you can hear me. I couldn't hear any of the speakers so far, but as long as you understand, I guess, is what's important. My name is Bill Richards. I have lived at 89 Brayburn Drive since 1970. If the Planning Commission wishes to convey a realistic picture to the City Council, it should include all previous minutes regarding any and all cemetery discussions, all formal written opinions submitted by the neighbors, and any legal opinions rendered. There have been a couple. I do not know of a single neighbor in favor of a change in the land use designation from parks and open space to low-density residential use of these 107 acres in question of Resthaven Memorial Park, 3900 Willamette Street. Needs of the neighbors and the public in general need to be considered. Where do we go to obtain land for a future cemetery? Among the concerns expressed by neighbors to this property, A, their property values, B, traffic and noise, C, the whole privacy issue, D, more erosion, if you haven't been up there even in the dry weather, E, general deterioration of the neighborhood, and as of today, clearing of land with heavy equipment already started July 14th. I only wish I could speak for the dear. We have allowed a capstone monstrosity at one end of Willamette Street. Please allow the end, under consideration, to remain more natural. Finally, may I ask that integrity be maintained with the process and that collectively the Planning Commission utilize sound judgment among yourselves and for all of the other residents of Eugene for today and tomorrow. Thank you very much. I will leave this with her, and if anyone wants a copy, they can get that.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Kate Dubach. Hope I got that last name right.
My name is Kate Dubach. I live at 77 Brayburn. I back up to the church, basically, and Resthaven's on our west. I'm sorry, I'm quite disorganized, but when you're listening to this information, all these questions come up, so I'm probably going to skip around. I thought I just had a question. Turns out I had a lot more to say, but I guess the first thing I want to say is that I agree with the first neutral speaker regarding transparency. Heather has been very helpful in providing information and answering questions, but whatever comes to this community and the people who are concerned about this process needs to be in common language, not, you know, pursuant to five, four, six, seven, whatever. And for instance, Mr. Giorowski, is that your name?
Yes, it is.
When you started this meeting, you spoke about a whole bunch of rules, which basically, I don't think any of us as laypeople, if you call it that, really understand. And so I don't know, maybe it wasn't important, but it's, you know, it's concerning that we're supposed to be following these rules, but we really don't know what the rules are or what the process is. And, you know, that speaks to all the years that we have been coming to these meetings regarding Resthaven with different proposals each time, and we come and we present our testimony, and then what happens to that information? I mean, do you have all that information from the prior meetings? I would think probably not. But it just seems like to ask the citizens to just keep coming back and coming back and coming back to present the same information, it would just be helpful if you actually had that information to start with. I guess I wanted to speak to the applicant stating that he did, he or she, they, do not have plans to develop. And in that, the problem is that before, with other applications, it has also been plans not to develop or plans not to do something one way or the other. For instance, when he asked for a application to cut down trees, he ended up cutting down a lot more trees. So, and then, of course, after they're gone, there's nothing you can do about it. But my point is, you know, the application keeps coming forward, and I think a concern is that if it's granted, then, you know, what's the overseeing on that? After that, what happens? Who follows up on that and makes sure that it's followed to the law? I don't think, I don't think really we understand the difference, and Heather was trying to explain to it to us, the difference between what the designation is now, what the designation will be, and what difference that makes. All we know is that it's been, there's been talk all along about development, and the applicant's representative today likened this property to the property on West 11th, the cemetery on West 11th. Well, that, as far as I know, that cemetery is not surrounded by low-density residential. I think it's more out in the open. This is a very different property. It's a property surrounded by a community, and that community has used that park for a long time. So, you know, for us, it's like, well, if you don't, if it doesn't really change anything, then why are we changing it? Why are we not keeping it parks and open space? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dubach. I think we have the opportunity now for the applicant to rebut.
We're available for questions.
Does that mean you do not have an official rebuttal? Okay.
That's right. We have nothing specific to rebut.
Are there any questions of the applicant that the Commissioners elect as Commissioner Barosky?
Thank you for everybody who came and testified. I appreciate you coming out and giving us your feedback. This is how we help make our decisions. I have a couple of questions for staff and/or the applicant. The first is regarding the redesignation from parks and open spaces, public lands, to R1. And in specific, in the findings, Goal Number Eight, the recreational needs. In the staff report, it says that the PROS Plan identifies the need for a neighborhood park in this vicinity. However, the PROS project and priority plan states that locations and acquisitions of the are approximate. So the PROS Plan says, yes, this area is in need of a neighborhood park, is the way that I'm reading that. Says the property owner has no interest in selling any portion of their site for a park at this time. The question that I have for staff and/or perhaps the applicant is, in the Metro Plan, is there any other area, I know you showed existing parkland up there, is there any other lands that are designated park and open spaces in the Metro Plan that would fit the needs of this neighborhood park other than this land that is already designated parks and open spaces?
Excuse me, if I may. I just want to ask a procedural question here. If the questions are not directed at the applicant, then I would rather close the public hearing if they're directed at staff, but if they're directed at the applicant, I'll keep the public hearing open.
I'm just looking for an answer.
I understand. We can have a chance to ask staff questions after the public hearing is closed, but I believe that the applicant has indicated that he was here to answer any questions in deference to a formal rebuttal.
Correct.
Okay.
And I also have other ones that the applicant could --
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, we should direct them to the applicant, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we want to finish up the rebuttal portion of that, and so it may be good to just lay out some of the other questions, because the applicant may want to respond to some of those, and we may, too, to help you provide some information.
Okay, so that's one of my questions. Second question goes to the findings under, it's on page 21, so it's, as far as the needed houses, the, at the bottom of the page, A30, balance the need to provide a sufficient amount of land to accommodate affordable housing with the community goals to maintain compact urban form. How does the applicant see this zone change, applying this standard of bringing in housing that is, meets the definition of affordable housing, which is in the next paragraph below that says households at a median income at 30%? So it's been brought up that this is going to help, one of the arguments is that this is going to help the inventory of affordable housing, and I was wondering how you see that happening.
Well, by making this land available for housing development of any kind, it is helping to maintain a compact urban form. What kind of housing, in terms of marketing cost and so on, what kind of housing ultimately gets developed on these acreage, up to 45 acres, remains to be seen. I mean, that is going to require a, one or more specific development proposals. I mean, it's guesswork at this point. It's possible that the owner could joint venture with an entity locally that does affordable housing. It's possible the owner could go develop market rate housing. It's possible it could be a mix of those two things, but neither of those can happen if the property is not redesignated low-density residential. So you can't draw a conclusion about the type of housing that's going to be developed on this property unless you first designate it low-density residential.
But you are saying, you're asking us to approve it, and one of the arguments that you're giving us to try and have us approve this is that this will make more land available for low-density housing, so.
It will.
Or low.
Yeah. It will make land available for affordable housing, and you can make that finding without talking about the specifics of any project that might be developed on it.
And then my last question can be after the record.
Okay. Commissioner Mills has a question.
Yeah, for the applicant. Going back to staff's report, they quote, say, "The property owner has indicated no interest in selling any portion of their site for parks at this time." Can you expand on that or give us more on that?
Well, I'm going to ask this question without looking at my client, but I don't believe the city has asked to buy any portion of this property for a neighborhood park. Yeah, we haven't heard that request. And I would elaborate by saying it would be atypical for the city to be approaching the landowner at this time to acquire by any means a portion of this land for a neighborhood park. park. In my experience, the staff can correct me here or embellish, in my experience, the city's approach is to make neighborhood park siting decisions in the context of specific development proposals. So if, for example, there were, you folks blessed this application, and the City Council blesses it, and we have the designations we're asking for, and at some time in the future, there's a proposal to develop a portion of this property for a certain kind of housing, at that time, the city staff would ask themselves, is this the time and is this the location to snag a piece of this for a neighborhood park? And they'd answer that question. If the answer was yes, then the city would step forward and say, let's talk about this. That's been my experience with how the city's operated in the past.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the public hearing. I've heard no request to keep the record open, so therefore, the public record is also closed. At this time, I'd ask if there's any questions of the Commissioners that they'd like to ask of staff. Commissioner Giorowski.
Thank you, Chair. I was looking in the record after reading Mr. Milks' testimony. Can you direct me to where in the record the copy of the public notice would be? I didn't see it in what was sent out in the drop box today, before our deliberations, if I could get a copy of that. Also, if you could address his concerns that the public notice was incorrect in citing the code numbers, and also the applicability of noticing whether you're referencing a web, a web address. I know that that is moving into new technology, and it may not be covered in code, and what is, what is actually statutorily required? You know, if you're referencing something and it's not available, is that not noticed? But if that type of information could get brought to us before our deliberations, that would be something that I would like to look at.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, a question for staff on the open space designation. I guess, having heard from the applicants, I'm sorry, from the homeowners in the area this time around, I've got asked a question about what are our options for open space designation going forward? In other words, we're talking about the R1, changing everything to R1, as I understand it, but I guess I'd like to still hear what are the kinds of options that we could, that we could entertain going forward to help ensure open space in this area, given that we do plan a park? I'd like to know what the options are and what the, what the liabilities and risks are.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one. In reading the material, staff, there was an issue, I think I read in two different places, where there was a mention of if this is developed, whether or not a PUD would be required. So I'm interested in knowing if it is developed, what would trigger a PUD or kind of be developed under whatever is the existing zoning at this time?
Any other questions from anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the question regarding the sufficient land, amount of land to accommodate affordable housing within the community's goals to maintain compact urban form. And the answer was, I just wanted to get confirmation that that is considered to be, the staff response is considered to be fully applicable. In other words, it mentioned specifically affordable housing, and then you defined affordable housing, and then, and then you say, because we're adding space for housing, then it allows for affordable housing. I just want to make certain that that meets that criteria fully.
So just to clarify, you want us to elaborate on that?
Right, yeah.
Commissioner Nicolalee.
Nicolalee. It's a tough one. First off, I just wanted to thank everybody who came and testified today. I know that it's not easy, considering you probably have kids and loved ones and work and all sorts of other things going on, so really, I do thank you for coming here today and sharing your testimony with us. For staff, I just have a few concerns, namely echoing Commissioner Giorowski and Commissioner Baker's concerns. I am worried about park proximity in this case, the fact that it is, the fact that the map that you showed us, it doesn't look like there will be much open space within close proximity, so that is something I'd like to discuss. I am worried about the lack of transparency in this. I do think it's important that we see a copy of that public hearing, and I'm also curious, in addition to a web address, because I know that not everyone has access to Internet or Wi-Fi or, that's not quite a public resource yet, what other opportunities to read these materials for people given? And then, I also have questions about the affordable housing and how that would be met, and I think that for that to be included as part of this, we probably need to discuss that more. And finally, on the transportation facilities, in the staff report, it says that there's not going to be a large change, but I'm a bit curious how this area would support so many new single-family homes, considering, potential single-family homes, considering it's an area that isn't frequently served by transit, it doesn't always have the best bicycle facilities, so I would imagine that those would mostly generated single-family occupancy vehicle trips. So those are things that I would be curious to learn more about. Thank you for your work.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, and I have two more follow-up questions. One is just a suggestion or maybe a request. The parks map that you showed was sort of inverted of what I would have liked to have seen. I would have liked to have seen a quarter-mile radius is around the existing parks areas, so we could see what areas would or wouldn't be covered by the existing parks. So if it's possible, you could put that together, that way we would see which areas are already covered and which areas are not, and see. And the other question I have is really more of a question, I mean, obviously, based upon the transportation study that was done, you know, there are more trips generated, but it's not a large enough trips to trigger going into a, trigger, is it D, I believe that we're concerned about?
Everything's D or better.
Yeah. So, trigger going past D. What I'm wondering about, and this is, this is not specifically about, I mean, it is related, partially related to this, but it's more in a general way, there are obviously some other things planned along Willamette Street that will have impact, for example, on the 33rd and Willamette intersection or whatever, that are not related to this, but obviously, we've been deliberating on some other zone changes that will have significant impact on, you know, that corridor if it densifies, and I'm just wondering how we handle these kinds of issues where we have, you know, development here that isn't a problem, and development here that is, may not be a problem, but when you combine them all together, then we start to see an issue. So I just want to know how we would be handling that in the future, you know, not so much related to this one in specific, but at least mention how we should be considering that.
I have one last item. In the referral memo of 51815, I was just wondering if, I didn't see it in all the material, if there were comments from southeast neighbors? That's, none? That's a quick question. Okay. At this time, I'll ask the Commissioners, although I've heard many questions, but I'll ask anyway, is the Commission ready to deliberate tonight? No? Okay. Therefore, for those in the public, the deliberations are scheduled for Monday, July 27. Any other comments from staff?
At 11:30 in the slot room at the Adrian Building, 99 West 10th Avenue.
Oh, okay.
For the public, in case you're wanting to go.
Yep, slot room. All right, well, thank you all for...
Can I say something about southeast neighbors?
Uh, no.
The southeast neighbors don't represent us anymore. That, so that's a problem. Crest Drive, now we are represented by Crest Drive. That just happened, so I don't know that they even know anything about us.
They know about us.
They do. Okay, good. Well, so that's why we didn't see southeast neighbors.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming, and probably will see some of you on the 27.